All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome. I'm going to call the order. The Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 10th, 2020. It is 10:08. We had a little technical difficulties this morning, but we are on in Zoom and in person here in the chambers. I want to thank everybody for coming this morning. So with that, Mr. Daley, will you lead us in the salute to the flag, sir?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsha Burke Bigler.
Here.
Katie Jung via phone.
President.
Vaughn Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney via Zoom David Watzvial.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you go to item three? Actually, before we jump into item three, Mr. Manager, I'm going to call a quick audible here and step back to our... Well, do you want to do another public comment, Chief? Okay, we will do it under... So if you can call public comment, sir.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are made to the commission as a whole.
All right. So before we jump into that, Chief, can you... Will you come up to the podium, sir? We had an award ceremony and badge pending ceremony during our Board of Fire Commissioners this morning, and we had one presentation that was not able to be made because we were waiting for Mr. Enriquez, and he has now joined us, and we thank you for coming, sir. And so with that, Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On June 23rd, Mr. Enriquez saw a fire that was brewing towards an apartment complex in Sun Valley. He was working for Q and D at the time and operating a water truck. And through his quick action, he backed the water truck into a place to where he could spray water and stop the advancing wildland fire on the apartment complex. And with that, we'd like to award him the Fire Chiefs Medal of Commendation. So Hector, congratulations.
Congratulations, Hector.
Very briefly, it was a busy summer for Station 45 Sun Valley. I want to mention Steve Gillespie, who was a foreman for Q and D, who worked with us during that time of getting the fire trucks out during the many, many emergencies that happened at Sun Valley. And we really, really appreciate Q and D's working with us to get our fire trucks out in a timely way. Mr. Gillespie is here, and so I wanted to acknowledge him to the board and thank Q and D.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. We appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen. We do appreciate all your service, and I think many people were saved there. You saved a lot of people's homes and helped a lot of people that day. So thank you for all your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments signed in?
We do. We have Anne Marie Grant via voicemail.
All right. If we can play the voicemail now.
111020 County Commissioners Meeting, Item Three Public Comment. Anne Marie Grant's sister, Thomas McPurdy, murdered by Reno PD, hard-tied for 40 minutes by Officer Christopher Agood, who also shot and wounded another community member, by the way. Jorge Aparicio and Maxwell Tomlin then dumped up at the jail while still hard-tied and asphyxiated to death by Brendan Glenn. Paul Hubbell, Timothy Sanger, under the supervision of Sergeant Wayne Westerman as he pleaded for medical attention and told them they were killing him, which they did. My brother's murder, as well as Justin Thompson and Nico Smith's asphyxiation deaths by Washoe County all occurred while each commissioner that currently sits on this board neglected their duties under the NRS. While the election is over and so is one of your jobs as county commissioner, I was hoping for two departures, but I'll settle for one and take it as a victory for the community and the personal satisfaction I get from it. Are you all aware the sheriff's office has changed their phone system without telling anyone? Any balance you may had on their end is apparently gone. The previous company legacy inmate communications rate was 14 cents a minute. The new provider, 25 cents a minute. To add money, the old provider, $3 flat fee. Now it's $5.95 to add money. Given the outbreak of COVID-19 at the jail and the increased isolation of the inmates, this seems like the wrong time to be increasing the fees for inmates to communicate with loved ones. I know you all live up on your imaginary pedestal where nobody you love could end up at par. I suggest you all start working for the community members, or perhaps your time on the board will be up to the next election. I'll leave you with my brother dying and being killed at the jail.
Do you have any line problems?
Free time for this.
Oh. Do you have any line problems?
Yes, ma'am. They just looked at you. I just told you that.
I want to go with that.
I can't play this game no more. It's all on fucking video. They're killing me. They're going to kill me! Yeah.
Don't know if you could hear that, but that was one of the deputies being told to back away from my brother's throat. Have a good day.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any further public comment?
There is nobody else signed in.
Any via Zoom? All right. Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we're on to item four.
Item four is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates. Requests for information or topics for future agendas.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything this morning?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of items. First, I would point out that on Monday, the 16th, we will have a special session to review the canvas of the vote. I personally had an opportunity last Tuesday to go out and visit over half of the polls. I want to thank the poll workers who came out and worked tirelessly to make sure that we got the vote in. A lot of hard work and a lot of voters. I also want to thank the Registrar Our Voters Office for the work they put in to make sure that Washoe County was able to get our votes uploaded to the Secretary of State in a timely fashion. Also, I want to thank our law enforcement folks, who I think had just the right amount of presence at our polling locations so that folks felt safe. Thankfully, we didn't have many incidents. But... And I want to thank our tech services folks who worked alongside the Registrar Our Voters Office to make sure that the machines worked and things worked smoothly. So again, the canvas of the vote will be assessed. Special session set up for Monday, the 16th. There are two items on the consent agenda that I'd like to bring to the attention of the board. Number one is item 8F, which is the Digicom Group. We're phasing out a couple of positions and reclassing, reclassifying those as OA3s. This is a part of our broader effort to rethink how we're staffing in the office of the county manager to provide for more potential support for 3-1-1 and also for our outreach for the community advisory boards, the CAB reforms that we've discussed with the board previously. So we're actually reclassing the positions so that we have more flexibility when people go on vacation or maternity leave, those kinds of things. I just wanted to point that out. And then the last point this morning is the appointment of Justin Roper as our chief in the Department of Alternative Sentencing. Even though it's in the consent items, I want to acknowledge I participated in the interview panel along with others, and he has been an exemplary leader of that department over the years. And I'm very pleased to see that he was selected for this role. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to acknowledge and give my appreciation on the public record of some cross-trained employees I saw on national news when it was the hand to our Washoe County Registrar Our Voters. And I say that a little bit with a chuckle, but I also say that with a bravo and congratulations. And I would like to see more discussion in a future agenda item on what the efforts are that the whole organization does for cross-training so that we can move faster and leaner and leaner and more responsive to any issues that show up. So bravo to the staff numbers I saw on CNN, and you made us proud and good job at cross-training. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one short thing. Mr. Manager, we've had a short conversation about this. This might be the best time to start talking about this again, especially with respect to COVID and our employees and the different organizations. And that is a risk manager, someone who is actually looking at risk throughout the county, and not just for COVID, but other issues. And it's something that we've talked about for quite some time, asked the last manager to look into this, and so I'm going to try to keep this alive. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Couple of things I'd like to add this morning. You know, obviously, we have had some interesting weeks since we last convened as a commission, especially to the COVID response. First and foremost, I want to thank the manager for his continued resolve on working on this issue. It is a tremendously difficult issue, and every day seems to be a new hurdle that we have to overcome. And he's done it really beautifully in the sense of operating in the best of his capacity to make sure that this organization runs smoothly, but our public gets the response that is needed. However, my challenge is that we have jumped up significantly over the last week, almost doubled, are currently hospitalized. A number of our hospitals are now staging their emergency response sections of their hospital to respond to COVID. Whether you believe in COVID or not, whether you take this seriously or you don't, whether you're having, suffering from COVID fatigue or not, there are very many active cases out there. There are a lot of individuals that are currently in need of hospitalization, and our hospital staff are becoming overwhelmed. And it is challenging. And so I sit here as a commissioner asking once again that businesses do what they can to make sure that we enforce if people are sick and try to do some self-assessment, make sure that you are following up with your mask requirements, either for your staff or for your patrons. It is becoming challenging. And I know the governor will be having a press conference later this afternoon to discuss the COVID response. But it is a challenge, and we need to continue to do our part because our cases have almost tripled, and our hospitalizations have almost doubled. And those are frightening numbers to have that happen so quickly. So once again, those are some challenging times in front of us. One thing I do want to point out, too. Today, joining us in the crowd is retired Chief Joe Ingraham, who is down here. We will be in attendance for his successor. And we, once again, always, Joe, I know it's been a tough year, and we didn't always get to say goodbye to you in person. But now that we can see you in person, and it looks like you're living pretty good in retirement, we always like seeing you have and come and spend some time with us. So congratulations once again on your retirement, and thanks for being here today. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I see Mr. Smith is in the audience also. And I just, I wanted to remind staff, please, I'd like to see an agenda item in the not-too-distant future about some speeding issues that we've had. The sheriff can only do so much. There's a great number of places that I'm getting complaints about, and I think that there are some measures that we could take that could help mitigate some of these issues. It's not going to completely stop it. I recognize that. But I think that there are some things that we can do, and so I'm going to keep that on the burner also so that it comes back sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right. Seeing nothing further, any last call for any comments from any of the commissioners? Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, I forgot to mention that we are live streaming, picture-in-picture, if our viewers are watching this, because we've had a fabulous response to the live stream of the ballot processing over in the Registrar Our Voters. I believe it's 11 to 7 every day. So we don't want to lose... That stream is embedded in some of the national news feeds, as Commissioner Jung mentioned, so MSNBC, CNN, and others. They're actually pointing to it so people can actually see ballots being processed as they are in other battleground states around the country. So if the viewers are seeing the picture-in-picture, that's what that's all about. We've gotten over 30,000 viewers of this since we turned it on, and it will be on until this weekend when that activity, as you know, comes down, and then we'll have the canvas of the vote next week.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do appreciate that. And it has been very interesting to watch that count go on and participate that without having to actually be there, so. All right. Seeing nothing further from the commission, we will close that item, and we will move on to item five. Mr. Manager.
Item five is a presentation and update on abandoned vehicle removal throughout Sun Valley. Acknowledge receipt of the report. And we should have the Washoe County Sheriff's Office by Zoom, I believe.
Yeah, I believe we do have Lieutenant Dennis Hipper joining us this morning to discuss this item and give us an update. Lieutenant Hipper, are you with us this morning?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you very much for joining us. We do appreciate your time this morning. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. And I'm having trouble sharing my screen.
We will...
Well, I have it.
Got it.
And thank you.
All right. We can see your screen now perfectly, sir.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. The purpose of my presentation this morning is to give an update on some measures the sheriff's office has taken with community partnerships to remove a plethora of abandoned vehicles throughout Sun Valley. The typical process when we are notified of a abandoned vehicle or several of them is to immediately post that vehicle with a notice that it would be towed, if not moved, within 72 hours, at which point, if it remains, we would contact one of our local tow companies who would remove it from its abandoned location, store it in one of their storage lots, and pursue the process of having the DMV issue a junk title certificate, at which time, the tow company would become the legal owner of that car essentially and would be able to dispose of it any way they saw fit. However, we had some unique challenges, as everybody else did with this issue, due to the COVID-19 DMV shutdown. This basically immediately prevented the tow companies from removing any of the vehicles previously collected from their lot, giving them no additional room, no space to remove any additional vehicles from the community. Their storage space issue in that regard is what resulted in a very large unsightly amount of abandoned vehicles throughout Washoe County. Additionally, one of the ongoing difficulties that we have with this process is the nature of how these vehicles tend to be exchanged through private-party sales and not reported to the DMV when the title and ownership changes hands, giving us very little teeth to be able to pursue any enforcement measures for the dumping itself. That's an ongoing issue that we will look to resolve through the legislature in the future. However, for the time being, we were able to create a community partnership and change our procedure a little bit that allowed us to move these vehicles en masse, really, from Sun Valley. And part of the process was changed in that when we were notified, the prior process of tagging that vehicle for removal remained the same. But prior to contacting the tow company, we altered that procedure to contact the DMV directly. And through their investigative means, they were able to issue some of those, well, quite a few of those junk certificates without having to take that extra step of moving the vehicle to the tow yard first. So with junk titles in hand, we were able to pass off those vehicles to the tow companies in the field. There were some extra problems with this because many of these vehicles were also filled with household trash. So we utilized some inmate work crews through our work supervisors, and we were able to haul away quite a bit of household trash that was dumped in those vehicles as well. And through this process, then, when the trash was removed and the junk title was in hand, we were able to pass those off to the tow companies who were able to skip their tow yard and dispose of these vehicles directly from the field. We obviously were not able to do any of this alone, so we engaged our community partners in aiding us. And you'll see here a list, without me reading through it, of the primary partners who participated in this very large-scale operation. At this point, we've essentially gone through three operations, the first of which was at the intersection of Aloha and Klondike in Sun Valley on July 15th, 2020. And just in that one area, less than one block area, we removed 17 abandoned vehicles. We utilized three inmate work crews to clean up the trash that was there and filled two 30-yard dumpsters full of trash just from that area. Those pictures on the side are from that operation. Our second event, we spread out through Sun Valley some of the higher-density areas of abandoned vehicles. We did this on September 3rd and 4th, at which time, we removed a total of 27 abandoned vehicles through Sun Valley. There were a total of six targeted areas throughout the community. And again, during that operation, we filled an additional two dumpsters full of just mostly household trash. And lastly, just last week, this presentation was prepared prior to last week. But last week, we started a third operation at the dirt extension of Leon Drive, an area which overlooks the construction of the New Hug High School and is very visible from that location as well. And we have so far removed five additional vehicles from that area and counting. There's more work to do, but that is our current target. So that is an update. This funding, most of this was made possible because of funding from the Sun Valley General Improvement District. Without that funding, specifically their cooperation and the cooperation of our local tow companies, pick and pull, and the Nevada DMV, none of this would have happened. And we do feel it's, to this point, it's been a great success, and we were able to remove a great deal of blight from our community. And that's it.
Thank you, Lieutenant Hipper. I do appreciate it for the update. Commissioner, are there any questions? Commissioner Herman?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank you all at the Sheriff's Department for pulling together all this community, you know, and getting this work done to clean up some of these neighborhoods. I mean, this is a long, long time that this has been waiting to happen. And it's just, I'm so grateful that it's finally coming to fruitfully to the surface and getting something done about it. Thank you so much. I am grateful for my communities that needed that very, very badly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jung.
Hi. Thank you. I just want to thank the Sheriff Salem and his command staff and the Staff Sergeant for addressing this and being responsive to this. And then what I want to, as a thank you, please let us know, as commissioners, what we can do to help you with any of the legislative processes that you've identified in this that would loosen this up so that we can react more quickly under the cover of the law, right? And not with a ton of liability. Because I just, the only way we're going to stay on top of this is if we stay on top of this. And so let us know, and let us know even through the budget process, what your priorities are and what you need. I'm here to help. I really am deeply grateful. Thank you, as are my citizens in Sun Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right. Lieutenant Hipper, we do appreciate you being here this morning. It has been a lot of work, and I know it's an improvement. So thank you for participating this morning. All right. We will move on from this item, seeing no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, that was an action item, possibly. So I need to, for the record, state that there is no public comment.
Oh, yeah. It is for possible action. I don't understand. Okay. So thank you. So is there any public comment?
There is not.
All right. And no, we will not take a motion to do anything. There's no motion needed. But just thank you for the update, Lieutenant Hipper. All right. With that, Mr. Manager, we are on to item six.
Item six is receive updates and presentations regarding the following NDOT Highway improvements, statewide advanced signal warning systems from Sam Amati, PE NDOT Project Manager, and Lacy Kolkman, PE HDR Director of Traffic Engineering, and Mount Rose Highway and Use, I'm sorry, US 395 Par Boulevard Bridge from Joe Pullen, PE NDOT Project Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do believe we do have Mr. Amati and Mr. Pullen on Zoom, correct? All right. So we will make, I believe, Mr. Amati, are you with us? Can you hear us, sir? Mr. Pullen? Jay, are you there?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir. How are you?
Great. Thank you. Just give me one second, and let me pull up the presentation.
All right. All right. Great. We can see it perfectly. Thank you, Mr. Pullen.
Good morning, everybody in the audience. For the record, my name is Jay Pullen. I represent in the Nevada Department of Transportation and the Project Management Office, and I'm here to present the Par Bridge and Mount Rose Highway project update. Replacing the Par Bridge is the first phase of the US 395 North Valleys project. This project will widen US 395 from North McCarran to Stead Boulevard. The previous bridge was over 45 years old and was structurally deficient. Necessary repair costs were comparable to that of a new structure. The department made the decision to accelerate the bridge replacement ahead of the original Phase 1 schedule. What typically takes 12 months to design was completed in half that time. The bridge was removed in a marathon weekend in June and opened to vehicle traffic in October. This was a four-month turnaround. Due to the existing high-voltage transmission line overhead, Q and D Construction performed what is referred to as a girder roll to install the girders under the transmission line. This was the first NDOT project where precast girders were slid into place. At this time, most of the work has been completed. The contractor will continue to work on the pedestrian fence, lighting, and decorative structures. The department designed the bridge to state and federal standards, including incorporating... including incorporating traffic counts and performing a site triangle to ensure required site distance. However, with the opening of the new bridge last month, the department received public feedback regarding the northbound off-ramp, specifically the visibility when making a left-hand turn. After reviewing site conditions, the visibility was affected by a few factors. First, let's look at the geometric design of the interchange. It is a tight diamond configuration where the ramp alignment is very close to the structure, which affects visibility. There was also a profile change where the east side of the interchange was raised four to five feet. Additionally, new design standards require taller bridge rail. The second factor to consider is that the new structure includes sidewalks on both the north and south side. So the stop bar is set further away from the intersection to accommodate the crosswalk. And lastly, but not least, the advisory speed for the bridge is set at 20 miles an hour. But a field review indicates vehicles are driving much faster than that on the structure itself. This discrepancy impacts visibility needs. With all those factors considered, the department is moving forward with a short-term field changes to improve site visibility for the ramp. While the bridge sidewalk on the north connects to existing sidewalk on both the Par and Dandini side, this is not the case for the sidewalk on the south end. There is no existing sidewalk to connect to on the Dandini side. The interim strategy is to maintain a closure of the bridge sidewalk on that south side. With the sidewalk closed, we will remove the crosswalk. Therefore, we can basically move the stop bar closer to the intersection to greatly improve visibility. Additionally, with some minor adjustments to the bridge striping, we can shift lanes further north, which will also enhance that visibility. Please note that these changes will continue until the next US 395 construction phase, anticipated to begin in 2023. For the next construction phase, the northbound off-ramp will be realigned further east, which means it will be closer to the Dandini Roundabout. Moving the ramp further to the east will provide additional distance and site distance from the bridge rail and will heighten visibility. At that time, the sidewalk will be opened. We are moving quickly towards a change order to make these adjustments. Once we negotiate with the contractor, we'll have a better understanding on the schedule. We are also cognizant of the winter weather as that may affect the schedule as well. In the interim, the contractor has placed electronic driver feedback signs to remind motorists to drive the advisory speed on the bridge. Mount Rose Highway is a scenic bypass and is officially named Highway to the Sky. State Route 431 connects, connects Lake Tahoe to the city of Reno, starting at the junction of State Route 28, stretching 24 miles northeast to South Virginia Street intersection. The average daily traffic on the valley section of Mount Rose Highway is growing from 15,000 vehicles daily in 2014 to nearly 23,000 vehicles daily in 2019. The department is moving forward with two strategies. First, an intersection spot enhancement at two key locations. And second, a corridor study to address the future needs. Improvements are planned at the Callahan and Edmonton intersections. We are currently in the design phase. The enhancements consist of raised medians and pork chop islands. This includes intersection lighting to improve visibility in the early morning and night. The Edmonton intersection design will accommodate a left turn out from the Edmonton approach. We anticipate finalizing plans in 2021 and beginning construction spring of 2022. The department is conducting a corridor study. With the nearby growth, Mount Rose Highway has experienced increased traffic. North of Wedge Parkway, the highway is experiencing a transition from a rural to suburban environment. The purpose of this plan is to develop a 20-year traffic forecast based on nearby land use. With this information, the planning study will establish a vision for the corridor. This vision will establish the appropriate roadway classification, access management standards, roadway connectivity, and multimodal strategy for the future need. This vision requires the support from local agencies and the public. In order for this plan to succeed, the department is collaborating with its partner agencies, Washoe County, City of Reno, and RTC Washoe. This also includes the nearby schools, law enforcement, businesses, and homeowners associations. A finalized action plan will include a very high level, short and long-term improvements based on our findings and hopefully provide realistic expectations based on available funding and priority. It is our goal that the study becomes a useful tool that the city, county, MPO, and NDOT use whenever designing projects along the corridor. The study area is 7.5 miles and starts at Douglas Fur Drive, which at that time is a two-lane highway, and then transitions into a four-lane highway. At the junction of South Virginia, the study area will continue on Geiger Grade Road for a short period to the Virginia Parkway Roundabout. The study began last month and will be completed within a year. The team will begin by reviewing the existing corridor conditions, such as reviewing crash data and reviewing previous studies. NDOT will host its first public meeting in January. This will be held virtually. With information collected from stakeholders and public meeting, our team will move forward with fine tuning the corridor vision. The second public meeting will be held early or late summer, depending upon the progress made by the team. By October 2021, we should have a finalized corridor action plan that can be utilized by NDOT and its partner agencies. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update.
Thank you, Jay. And we do appreciate you participating this morning in regards in the update for Par Boulevard and Mount Rose. I have some questions, and obviously you've addressed some of them. I, I still have some concerns. And I can appreciate NDOT's participation in addressing this as NDOT would from the standpoint of engineering and safety. However, the longer we delay these improvements, especially Par Boulevard Bridge, I, I understand, you know, that the alignment, the new alignment of the off-ramp will take time and that's going to be part of the new, next phase. But until we actually address some of those issues, there will be crashes along that, along that bridge and wrecks that will be impactful, not only to our staff and employees that work at our Regional Emergency Operating Center and also Par Boulevard, our detention center. Those, those concerns of mine are, are monumental. Secondly, in regards to the study on Mount Rose Corridor, I've had staff pull some information just, just over the last couple of years. For example, accidents are major along the corridor itself from Wedge Parkway up to Mount Rose Ski Area. The three, the three largest intersections that have the most accidents over the last three years are Callahan Ranch Road, Montro and Timberline, and Thomas Creek Road. Now, Montro and, and Timberline and Callahan reasonably have the most because of that right turn to the west or eastbound lanes off of the, from the northbound parts of the property, northbound parts of the, or northern ports of the highway. And when you're crossing those lanes of traffic, you're crossing two lanes of traffic, but also a center lane, a center turn lane to get onto traffic, especially at Montro and Timberline that will be traveling anywhere from 50 to 65 miles an hour off of the mountain. You get the same thing at the Callahan Ranch Road. We have developments off of Rock River Farm. You, you have the, I can't even remember what the name of the development, but you have a number of homes over there that are turning against that traffic. And the concern of mine is that that absolutely, both of those intersections need to be thought about for signalization. There's plenty of distance between each signal, at least the signal that's at Thomas Creek Road and currently at Wedge Parkway. But we need to look at those, those two with 11 accidents over at Montro over the last three years and then 13 at Callahan Ranch Road. And then year-to-date, with my, year-to-date with, from my sheriff's office, we had, we have issued 76 citations. That was as of October 26th this year, we, for speeding and different citations along the Mount Rose Corridor. And we've also had eight crashes, four injury and four property damage and one fatal. And so when we talk about those types of issues along this corridor, the longer we wait and the longer we study, and I appreciate, I can appreciate the reasoning for studying and making sure that things are done properly and not done twice. But these are challenges and these are lives. These are individuals that are, that are constantly putting their lives at risk every day, leaving their homes. And it is our responsibility to make sure that they're safe along these, while they're traveling along these corridors. But I do appreciate the, the update, Jay. I know maybe we can talk further offline and talk about how we can move this along. But I am frustrated that we still are at the place we are with just studies because we've been studying this for multiple years. So we need to make some, in my opinion, some movement forward. So I will relinquish my comments there. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jay Von Hartung, you may recall you and I worked on some of the geometry issues at Caide La Plata and Pyramid. And I'm very appreciative of some of the changes that NDOT made there. But I am, I, like the chairman, am very concerned with respect to the, the Par Boulevard Bridge. That's a, that's a very dangerous scenario. And just putting up signs telling people to go slower, I, I think is wishful. So I, I, I think that there may be some other ways to, to mitigate this. I, I, I know we kind of are where we are, but I think we need to deal with this sooner rather than later. That's just a comment. And then I had a question. You, you mentioned some statistics and they went by pretty quickly. And I, you said there were 23,000 ADTs on Mount Rose? And that was in 2018 that that last study was done, did you say? It was about halfway through your presentation, Jay. Starting at 2000, I don't remember, 14 and then going through 2018?
Did we lose Jay?
I apologize. I was searching for that unmute button. This is Jay on the record. As far as the numbers and statistics, it was 15,000 vehicles daily in 2014.
All right.
And then it jumped to 23,000 vehicles daily in 2019.
19, okay. So we don't have a 2020 traffic count yet?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Did you guys do an RSA, a road safety audit on that seven and a half mile section on Mount Rose?
That is correct. There has been a road safety assessment along that corridor, along with, there were two, there were two, what we call ICE studies, intersection control evaluations at two key locations. So those are the three studies that our consultant will be reviewing before they dive deeper into the corridor vision.
And, and Mount Rose Highway, of course, is not in my district, but I, I stand locked arms with my, my colleague. That's, that's a very dangerous corridor. And it's because of speed. It's because of people coming off the mountain and, and, you know, some going up the mountain. I, I, I know for myself, it's, sometimes it's hard, the, the, the sensation of speed is, is difficult to gauge going either up or down. So I, I, I look forward to hearing some of the solutions that, that NDOT is looking at. Have you looked at some type of a barrier down the middle of Mount Rose as well? Whether it's a K-rail or, or K-barrier or, or even a cable barrier? Are we talking about, about that addition, Mr. Pullen?
Sir, for this corridor vision, it's more of a planning document. We're not going to be in the weeds of the specific engineering design. When I refer to that vision, one of those items is access management and roadway classification. Roadway classification is an interesting thing because it really dictates the design, how we design a corridor. That could impact the design speed. How many lanes? Is the primary purpose of this facility just to move high volumes of vehicles quickly? Or has, because this area has urbanized, maybe what we need to focus on is that the characteristics are changing to where it needs to be more of a, maybe capacity and movement of vehicles is not the primary goal. Maybe that goal is more multimodal with lower speeds to accommodate those different types of activities. And so really this, what this study will do is it will identify what that future vision for that corridor is, how, and how best to reach it. And with that said, these, these ideas and concepts that will be used as guidelines by future agencies making projects on that roadway, it will entail things such as raised median, if that's what's needed based on the roadway classification.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I, and I'm hopeful, I, I know we're not agendized to talk about the Pyramid Highway, but we need some of the same measures on the Pyramid Highway. We have some, some very, very dangerous places going all the way out to the end of the valley and, and of course beyond, but there's, there, there's a real need there as well. So I'm, I'm hopeful that, that we will engage NDOT and NDOT will engage us, us in some future conversations. But thank you so much, Jay. I, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner John, you have questions for Mr. Pullen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pullen, you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation in terms of the Par Boulevard change, something about cost and it was, it was going to cost more. Can you restate that for me?
Yes, ma'am. What my comment was that Phase One of US 395 is anticipated to begin construction in 2023. What that said, because of that schedule, the Par Bridge is structurally deficient. It was in need of maintenance repairs. And if we were to delay the maintenance repairs, the cost of repairing the structure was going to be fairly significant to that of a new structure. So we opted to basically take Phase One and break it up into what we call Phase One A and Phase One B. Phase One A would be the accelerated bridge replacement, which would be followed up in 2023 by Phase One B, which is capacity widening 395 and realigning the Par ramps.
What would happen if you did nothing? And waited until the big one came and they got a brand-new bridge?
That was a risk that the department could have made. I believe we leaned heavily towards our structural division, which had a strong recommendation that we should not delay on the replacement of this bridge. So we opted for their expertise and elected to accelerate that portion ahead of the scheduled widening.
And then what will happen to this bridge in Phase One B?
Excellent question, ma'am. In Phase One B, what will happen is we will basically widen 395. So we're going to add an additional southbound general purpose lane on the inside. And then we're going to be adding auxiliary lanes, one in each direction. So we are going to widen. Now, this bridge was designed for this future phase, so it will accommodate the widening of 395. The only thing we're going to be focusing more on when we reach the Par Bridge is realigning the ramps so that it can accommodate the auxiliary lanes that we use for the weaving activities of the people on Main Line.
Okay, thank you. You satisfied my questions. I agree with the chairman and Commissioner Hartung that whatever we can do to help NDOT accelerate the movement of traffic in this community that is both safe and responsive to the neighborhoods that are around them. Because I wonder about the Mount Rose Corridor, do we take into view? Do we take into you, do you, but we through taxpayers, do we take into consideration the age of the people that are coming on and off Rose? And that's not just Mount Rose Highway. Do we take that into consideration, response time of average citizens? Biological response time, not a criticism of age, but do we take that? Is that any part of the planning?
Yes, ma'am, it is, especially in traffic engineering. I'd like to joke that it's more right brain than left because a lot of times you can't engineer human behavior. So when it comes to traffic control and those types of things, speed is a major factor and plays. So when we look at this design speed, we do look at the human behavior in terms of their response times. This will impact how large signs are so that we know that they can see it from the appropriate distance to have enough reaction time to respond to what they're reading. And those are the types of things that we have in our guidelines.
But are they age specific based on the biological slowing down of response time in people, let's say 70 and older? Do you consider that or no?
There are certain elements in the design, especially in traffic design, that looks at that specifically. However, one of those types of things is that unfortunately, even when we look at age, some 70-year-olds perform much better than other 70-year-olds. So we do take an average.
Well, of course, there's always outliers, but yes, I still would say that the majority that are in some of these areas, their majority age should be average, not biological outliers to those, those ages. But nevertheless, that's good to know and I'm, I want to know more about that as you come before us later in the year or whenever we need you. But I would also want to know if NDOT has data on identifiable areas that people of all ages, as we've seen, use to race vehicles? Because I believe that if we could also detour, deter and in some ways make it less appetizing for a flat, a flat straightaway, we also would curb these, you know, horrific wrecks that occur. And I mean, I think most, a lot of them, they're altered drivers one way or the other. But I also know that there is an age group of all ages that know where the special starts are, where you can test drive whatever your BP engine is. And is there a way that you evaluate that along with the demographics of the people who are ingressing and egressing, egressing on a daily basis?
That's a very interesting question. I would say that the, when we look at our guidelines, it's trying to capitalize on all those items you're addressing. The intent of an engineer is not to design a road that it's a racetrack. So when we design a road, things we look at is design speed. So we want to make sure that it's a comfortable speed. So if that's the case, so let's say we, we build a, a road that's 40 miles an hour. Our intent is not for people to drive at 60. So when we look at lane widths, for example, typical, typically for us, a lane width is 12 foot wide. That's what's comfortable and trucks can drive, ride comfortably. Typically, when you get to lower speeds, you're going to see narrower lane widths, less shoulder, curb and gutter. These are types of characteristics that will actually, drivers will actually slow down. So it, there's a lot of things that we do entail in our guidelines based on that. One of the challenges that we have is I don't think, I'm not, I'm not in our safety division, so I can't tell you if we have a list. But one of the challenges we have is such, we're talking about Mount Rose. Mount Rose is growing, community development wise, which is impacting and affecting the behavior of motorists on the roadway. And that's why instead of just, I just responding to public complaints and crashes and just fixing intersections, we have to look at the picture of the whole, as a whole. This corridor is changing and unfortunately, because of these changes in community development, NDOT is not, does not know what that future is. And one of the challenges we have is we just don't want to fix something with a Band-Aid and cause crashes in the next intersection because we didn't see the bigger picture. So with that said, Mount Rose is an example where it was originally constructed, at least when you look at it, it's, it's four lane, it's a four lane highway. It has lots of real estate. And unfortunately, that, when volumes are low, that increases driver behavior to speed. And that's something when we look at roadway classification for Mount Rose, maybe that intent will be to start redesigning and changing those specific characteristics so that it will, people won't feel comfortable driving that corridor at those types of speeds. They'll want to slow down because it doesn't feel safe. And that's something that we take into account. And so long story short, what I'm saying is because of traffic behavior changing, we can't always pinpoint where these speed areas are going to be because of the fact that unfortunately, you know, when you have an area that's highly congested, you're not going to see too much speeding because of the congestion. Congestion typically lowers speed. However, if all of a sudden an Amazon relocates, for example, like a warehouse, all of a sudden, all that traffic and trips aren't there anymore. And all of a sudden, it's, it's a high speed with low volume and that entices people to speed. So those are types of things unfortunately that we have to respond to and react to based on the, the demand that occurs in any given area.
I get it. I just wonder if you guys could go back quicker rather than these long-term outstanding plans? And it might be a federal rule that you have to, because largely this is paid by the feds, which is us, we pay those taxes. But that's where the funding source comes from. So what I, I guess my question would be, do you periodically, rather than once every 20 years or 10 years, like after the structure is built, shouldn't there be some sort of quality control that's looking at, you know, a year later, 18 months later? Is this actually functioning as it was designed in the present time? Instead of abandoning it, it feels like to me, and I know you're a state agency and we're not the largest county in the world, I get that. But it feels like it's more of catch-up rather than immediate resolution. And if this is a longer question, you can take it offline and explain it to me if you, if you would like to do that. But it just seems like we should be more reactive to real-time data, especially because we can collect real-time data and be able to go in and modify rather than, well, that's what you got and we'll see what the development does after that. You see what I'm saying?
I do, ma'am. I just don't believe I am the best representative from NDOT to respond to that picture or to that question. That's a very big picture item that includes planning division and parts of our scoping division and roadway design. I could answer it, but I may not be the appropriate person to respond to that.
Can you please get me the appropriate person to respond to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Mr. Pollan, and I, I think we've covered a number of the challenges that this commission sees. And you spoke to this, that as a planner and as an engineer, you have to look at the entire project globally. The corridor, the Mount Rose corridor, when you look at it, and in a micro level, you look at the developments that the county impact right there, all the way from South Virginia, all the way to Douglasford. However, the vice chair, the, the, the row, the corridor itself provides for an absolute gateway to her district, the vice chair's district, which is a growing district, which you have a number of individuals that are moving into the incline area. You have people recreate up on Mount Rose Highway, off of the ski area and numbers. So you're, you're pulling extra population to and from on that corridor. Not to, not only to discuss not just residential traffic, but the truck traffic. You have truck traffic every day that moves up, that's hauling trash, supplies to, to Tahoe. You have snow, you have snowplows that are yours and the county snowplows that are driving on that road. And then talk about the, the elevation and the, the true geometry of that road. That road changes elevation significantly, more significantly than any other, in my opinion, any other highway here in Washoe Valley, in Washoe County. But when you talk about how quickly that road drops off and changes and straightaways, and then you talk about, you throw winter and seasons in there and snow, we have a recent snowstorm. You have straightaways, as, as Commissioner Jung pointed out, that people can't prepare for slowing down. You have sun that can glare right into the front of your windshield. There are a number of challenges. And I know the vice chair and I have experienced it numbers of times, driving up and down that road for meetings and whatnot. And it's a challenge. So a lot of these environmental and global discussions need to go on when having not just an engineering standpoint from it. You have to look at this, as you already mentioned, globally. So I, I, I hope that that resonates with you and with NDOT because it is important as we move forward. And I think, I think that's a perfect segue into the next discussion, which is our advanced system, the advanced safety warning systems. And, but we have a few on Mount Rose Highway, but I think we need more, possibly some different, some different solutions. So we look forward to future discussions with you about that. But we do appreciate you participating with us this morning, Mr. Pollan.
Thank you for your time.
All right. And we have Mr. Amadi from NDOT as well, joining us.
My name is Samara Amadi.
Good morning, Mr. Amadi. This is Chairman Lucy. You have the floor, sir. And please, we are ready for your presentation in regards to the advanced signal warning systems.
Thank you. So maybe a little history about a advanced signal warning system that NDOT recently is trying to, or we are in the process of updating. Over the years, NDOT installed a couple of advanced signal warning systems on our roads. And we have them all over the states from the southern Nevada through the northern Nevada. As we progressed, we had new updates in our MUTCD, which is our manuals and then our engineering books. We realized the need to go back and update our system. So in 2019, we came up with a project and then commissioned HDR Incorporated to help us update our guidelines, which we had used for over 20 years. The previous guidelines, we felt the need had been, were outdated based on current engineering knowledge and publications that had come out. So in 2019, NDOT took the challenge with the big goal of one, coming up with guidelines, new guidelines for us and using the new guidelines to reevaluate all our systems that exist on our roads, to decide whether we needed to update our systems or do any changes that were required. Next slide, please. So our number one goal, as mentioned, was to make sure that all our systems across states were one, uniform and consistent and in line with our current guidelines. We also wanted to make sure that our roads were very safe and then the drivers were driving our roads accordingly to promote safety and reduce crashes as much as we can. Next slide, please. So to talk about advanced signal warning system, there's so many of them. Typical ones would be anything that alerts drivers to a pending change. For our advanced signal warning systems that we are, we are trying to update, they are mainly to inform drivers that there is a signal ahead. And there are conditions for which we install those advanced signal warning systems. They come in different shapes and varieties. The simplest of all is just a sign or a signage, which has the sign of a signal, red, yellow, and then green balls showing. Those are the basic ones. We refer to those ones as the static. And then we can have some more complicated ones, which have a sign and then a yellow beacon on either sides of the sign. They could be continuously flashing or they would only come on when the signal ahead is about to change to yellow or red. So as mentioned, in 2019, we commissioned HDR Incorporated to help us update our guidelines and study. As part of the guidelines, we made sure to include all the district engineers. We included the jurisdictions where we have our advanced signal warning system. So the county engineers, they were all involved. In fact, we met several times over the eight month period where HDR was studying and then coming up with the guidelines. We had meetings. Fortunately, then we could meet in person. So we had several meetings in person and we had offside meetings to discuss the various systems that we were coming up with. We also presented one time to the Washoe County in person. We, our chief also had an occasion to present to the commission once. And then in late October, early November 2019, we had the final guidelines come out. As part of the process, we commissioned HDR to visit each and every location where we currently had the advanced signal warning system, study the system, compare it with the current standards and guidelines that we had, and verify whether the system was in line with our guidelines. If it wasn't in line, we noted it, we took video shots, we measured various things and came back, met with the various district engineers, went through, using the guidelines to determine, to determine whether we needed to keep the system in place or modify it. Some of them required that we completely remove the systems and with the sole aim of improving safety. Then when we finished with that phase, we started with the project phase. In developing the projects for modification, we had to group the whole state into three areas. We followed the NDOT district. So we had District One, which is the southern Nevada, District Two, which is the north western Nevada, and then District Three, which is the north eastern Nevada. So in simple terms, this is just to show you how we came, how the three systems are. We have the static system, which is basically the sign. And we use this based on the fact that the signal ahead is clearly visible, but based on our engineering judgment, we feel the need to give the driver additional information to make a safe and reliable judgment. Next. The next system is the passive, which has a signage and two flashing beacons. In this system, the beacons are flashing 24/7. And we typically will use this when we are changing from, when the driver is driving from a rural area, getting into an urban area, he doesn't, he's not, he's not been dealing with signals. And suddenly you, you throw a signal at him, it might take him by surprise. So we use this system to alert the driver to changing conditions in the road. So that is one of the reasons. And sometimes we use them when there's a signal in a very isolated place, the driver has been driving over a period of time and not come across any signal. And sometimes when the speeds of the road over 45 miles per hour, we use this to alert drivers that, hey, look ahead, there's a signal coming up. So this is, these are some of the reasons why we use the passive system. The active system is the one that most people are familiar with because this is what we've had on our, on our roads currently. We've used this one based off on our previous guidelines. So the active systems are best deployed when we have very poor visibility. When, when you cannot see the signal, maybe you are in a curve and then you cannot see the signal ahead, this is very useful to alert the driver that there's a change in the signal ahead. Also, when we have areas where we have wintry conditions so that drivers cannot see the signal in the storm, or when we have a lot of trucks and then drivers cannot see the signal, we use this system to alert the road users that there is a signal which is about to change. Instead of they going ahead, they can start taking the necessary maneuvers to stop. We, like I mentioned, we, when we got our new MUTCD guidelines, we decided to make sure that, I mean, Nevada wasn't lagging behind. So we have updated our guidelines, which currently is 2019, that is advising us on how to deploy advanced signal warning system and, and operate them. The part, as part of the- and, and operate them. The part, as part of the, the guidelines, we also had to carefully think about all the locations where we wanted to install, uninstall, modify, or do anything with advanced signal warning system with the sole purpose of making our roads safer for the public. Next. In, when we decided to modify the systems, using the current guidelines and all the information that we currently have, safety was the number one thing on our mind. We also want to make sure that drivers are not driving based off on the advanced signal warning system. Drivers need to realize the need to pay attention on the road at all times. Statistics or data is showing us that every year, we are having over 200,000 red lights runnings and over 900 deaths nationwide. Nevada, I think, had about 303 traffic crashes every year for the past three, four years. That's what we have. If we can reduce this by eliminating red light running and its accompanying danger, we have achieved some purpose that we, that the state wants to go forward with. Next. So some of the things we are going to do as part of this project is for areas that we are not taking out the advanced signal warning system, we might go back, we will go back in and read time the system. It might be just one or two seconds, it might be three, four seconds plus or minus. But the sole purpose is to make sure that drivers are not overdriving in an attempt to beat the red light ahead. Because over the years, some drivers have noticed that when the system comes on and it starts flashing, they have maybe five seconds if they can gun their vehicles, some of them will accelerate and try to beat the system. And that is where we have a lot of the red light running with its accompanying danger. So if we can read time it, and that's what we are going to do, if we, we read time, we are trying as much as possible to prevent drivers from continuing with the bad habit that they've learned over the years. Next. Also, I would like to mention that once we, once we, we take out the advanced warning system for areas that have been taken out, or those that are going to be changed to active and those that are going to be changed to passive, some are going to be changed to static, it is not going to affect any of our emergency vehicles. The emergency vehicles are still going to be able to drive through our signals. The signals are going to be kept in place. It's only the advanced warnings that are taken out. The other thing to also remember is that it's not going to affect pedestrians. Pedestrians will still have full function at the intersections and can cross safely. The emergency vehicles will have their preemption. Once they hit their transpondent, they'll be able to have green in every direction they are going so that they are not delayed. Next. So this map shows us the Reno Sparks area, the areas that are affected. The blue dots are the ones that we are removing. We are eliminating the system completely based on our engineering study and our judgment so far. We think those ones have to go. We already discussed with the district, the jurisdiction engineers, we are all on board and we have the same agreement that these systems are not necessary. We need to take them out to improve safety on our roads. The pink dots are those we are modifying the timings and then the yellow dots we are converting to passive. Next. This is the area for the Carson Tahoe Douglas area, similar, similar to the one about the colors represent the same thing. Next. This is the Elko area. We are going to do basically timing for that section. Next. And then this is the Las Vegas area, which includes Perron and Henderson area and then the Clark County area. So in 2019, as mentioned, we got our guidelines, we did our field study, and we packaged our projects into three. We have the southern projects packaged as one, which is the D1, which is already in line. We advertised that, got a contractor on board. And then the northern Nevada, we grouped it into two. We have D2 South, which is the Douglas, Tahoe, and Clark County area, no, sorry, and then Carson City area. And then the D2 North, which includes the Reno Sparks area, which is the area that you guys are all in charge of. Then in 20, late 2020, we are going to start construction or maybe modification for most of the places. And hopefully, we'll be done with all the changes by 2022. Next. Acme Electrical has the D1, District One, project, and they are going to start work November 16th. Next. For D2 South, which is the Carson, Tahoe, and then Douglas County area, we have parelectric, electric with an award contract. And then they are going to start construction on November 30th. We had to make sure that they didn't get to affect our townsgiving because their contract was a little bit late in execution. The D2 North, we are still in discussion to see when we are going to advertise and then start with the implementation. In all the construction, one of the things we are intending to do is make sure that access to businesses and residents are not affected. Safety is our number one thing. The contractors and our engineers are making sure that we are not experiencing any unnecessary delays. Lane closures are going to be limited as much as possible. Detours and noise, we are taking all those things into consideration to make sure that this activity goes on as smoothly as possible. Also, the public is going to be very, very well informed. Our PIO and then the PIO from HDR are working together to make sure that the public are well informed ahead of any changes. Before the signals get taken out, before the advanced warnings systems get taken out, the public would be given a lot of information so that they will know what to expect. If they get there and then they are expecting to see the red and then don't see it anymore, they know that the systems have been taken out and they'll be driving using the actual signals, which are right ahead of them rather than looking for the flashing amber that we've had over the years. So yes, we are making sure that the drivers and then all the users of the road are fully aware of the changes that are coming up as soon as we start with the construction.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Amadi, I, I'm sorry to jump in here. We do have to keep moving along. We do have a, a pretty hefty meeting. So, oh, it looks like you've finished, completed your, your, your presentation.
That's it.
If you don't mind, I'm going to go right to questions really quick for, for the commission. I do know that Commissioner Hardtong has some questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Yamadi. I, I appreciate the very comprehensive presentation. I, I will tell you, though, I am terribly concerned when we start making these kinds of changes and, and even talking about how well informed the public will be. And I, with all due respect to NDOT, I watched the, the speeds in, on Pyramid Highway change one day from 45 miles an hour to 55 miles an hour, and there was no advanced warning from NDOT that this was going to change. In fact, I accused my staff of doing it and they had no knowledge of this. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little suspect of, of the public outreach and how well people will be informed because I'll use Pyramid Highway as the example. You have people, people traveling from the very far north end of, of the area, which are, are out in District Five. And then, of course, the, the, just the general folks who live in Spanish Springs. And so I'm, I'm concerned with the public outreach and how well informed they will be. You talked about the MUTCD guidelines and comparing them with national standards and et cetera. Are you familiar with the term, if it's not broke, don't fix it?
Yes, I am.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm not convinced that this is broken, sir. I, I'm sorry. I, I'm not convinced it's broken and I'm not convinced that it needs to be changed. I mean, the accidents that I see on Pyramid Highway are, are not from the advanced warning system. It, it's, it's really just more driver error. The one at the far end of the valley, the north end of the valley is at Caillada La Plata and Pyramid, that's the most dangerous one that we have. And in fact, I've had my own fire service blow through that intersection because they, doing the speed limit, could not stop in time. And, and I've had people tell me, who were towing horse trailers, they physically couldn't stop. Now, I, I recognize that that could be a, a function of changing the timing of the yellow and increasing the time of the yellow and that, and that's, could be very effective. But I've lived in this valley for 33 years. And I remember when Pyramid Highway was just two lanes. And then I remembered when it was widened. And I remember when there were no lights on Pyramid Highway whatsoever, all the way to town and only, and then a few stop signs here and there. And then as they changed to signals and when the advanced warning systems were put in. I consider them to be very effective, but we've trained the drivers to a certain behavior. And, and my fear is, is, is that in trying to stay with these national standards, it's, it's like, it's like, you know, trying to redecorate your house because it's the, it's the, all the rage. And, and I, I'm not convinced that it's broken. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I, I know that there's probably going to be some pushback from the city of Sparks because a lot of this is in their jurisdiction. I, I still am terribly concerned with Pyramid and Caillada La Plata. It's, it's a very, very dangerous intersection, the, the way that it's set up currently. So those are, those are my comments. I, I know, I know NDOT is well intentioned, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we have trained our drivers to, to react and look for these active intersections versus the passive systems. So I, I, I don't know as I need a comment from you, but, but I, again, I, I'm concerned. And I will just make one last statement. And that is, I hope NDOT is prepared when they, they start to make these kinds of changes. The backlash, and by the way, we get blamed here at the commission and the city councils. They never blame NDOT. When, when things happen on the highway, they don't, they don't blame you guys. They blame us. And, and we'll be the, we'll be the ones with the targets on both front and back. So I'm, I'm, I'm concerned. I will just tell you, I'm terribly concerned. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Dr., Mr. Amadi, maybe you can meet up or, or contact Commissioner Hartong offline for, for discussions further and to get some details. So, Mr., sorry, go ahead, Mr. Amadi.
As I said, we will do that. We would, we'll continue further discussions with the commissioner.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation today. Seeing further questions from anybody or, or statements, we will close this item. Mr. Pollan, Mr. Amadi, thank you for joining us this morning. We do appreciate your comprehensive presentations and updates for us. And hopefully we will have more discussions in the, in the future. All right. So that takes us to Mr. Manager. We are on to Item, Item Seven, sir.
Item seven is a proclamation, recognize the dedicated public service to Washoe County by, by Judge Peter Savara. I'm sorry, I practiced that unsuccessfully, as you can see, as a result of, of his recent retirement as Justice of the Peace for Reno Justice Court. And he is here in chambers with us.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I, I do appreciate this opportunity and felt it prudent that we honor this man. Pete Safraza, if you've grown up in this town or been in this community for any length of time, the Safraza name is wildly known. I first knew him, not really personally, but when he became, when he was mayor. When he served as mayor from 1981 to 1995, I was just a young kid and he was already serving as mayor. And now I get to the honor of, of sitting next to him and calling him a colleague as a commissioner, as he served as a commissioner as well, and as, most recently for the county as a Justice of Peace. So we're joined today by his wonderful family and we're happy to, that they're here with us today. They have, they're a family continually looking to serve our community in public service. So with that, I'd like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas Honorable Peter J. Safraza began his career as a Justice of the Peace for the Reno Justice Court in 2007, when he was appointed to the bench by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. Thereafter, the citizens of Washoe County voted to retain Judge Safraza in 2008, 2010, and 2016. Judge Safraza retired from the Reno Justice Court on October 28th, 2020, this year, ending a nearly 50-year career as an attorney, jurist, and politician. Whereas prior to his service on the bench, Judge Safraza served as a commissioner, vice chairman, and chairman of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners from 1998 to 2007. He also served the city of Reno as its mayor from 1981 to 1995. Whereas Judge Safraza graduated from Michigan State in 1967 with a bachelor's degree in political science, his lengthy commitment to public service began in 1969 when he joined the United States Peace Corps and served in Baja, Brazil until 1971. Thereafter, he earned his Juris Doctorate degree from the University of Wisconsin Law School and practiced public interest law in Wisconsin before relocating to northern Nevada in the mid 1970s. Prior to running for public office, Judge Safraza served as the Director of Nevada Indian Legal Services. Whereas in addition to his 13-year career as a judge at the Reno Justice Court, Judge Safraza has served as a member of several northern Nevada Native American tribes as a tribal judge within the Washoe Tribal Court, the Yarrington Paiute Tribal Court, the Ely Shoshone Tribal Court, the Fallon Paiute Tribal Court, the Pyramid Lake Tribal Court, and the Walker River Paiute Tribal Court, and the Intertribal Court of Appeals. Whereas we greatly admire Judge Safraza for his lengthy and diverse career in public service and his kind, impatient, and understanding demeanor on the bench. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim their deepest gratitude to Peter Joseph Safraza for his contribution to, and support to Washoe County and northern Nevada community for over the last 45 years. And let it be resolved that Judge Safraza will now enjoy a well-deserved retirement, which will include ample time with his family and friends. Dated this 10th day of November in 2020, signed by myself, Bob Lucy, Chair of Washoe County Commission. Judge, it's an honor and a privilege, and we have a number of individuals here that would like to speak on your honor. But first, sir, some comments from you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Chairman Lucy, County Manager Brown, Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Hartong, and especially Commissioner Burke Bigler for her service to Washoe County as well. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Jung, who is not here this morning, but is participating via Zoom, I believe. On behalf of my family, we wish to thank you for this honor. It's been a privilege to serve Washoe County for the last almost 21 years. And prior to that, the city of Reno, and also as a deputy attorney for the state of Nevada. And I'm honored to have served in that capacity. I thank you for this honor today. And I look forward to a long and happy retirement and wish to see all of you in the future. Thank you.
And I think joining us today, we do have Chief Judge Sullivan, who finished her morning docket early and wished to make some comments. So Chief Judge, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We, we've got you loud and clear.
Good morning, everyone. I am honored to be here. I am honored to be here on behalf of all of Reno Justice Court as the Chief Judge this morning, and I am joining you in congratulating and honoring Judge Sepraza today. As you can see from the proclamation, he has had a long and distinguished and varied career. And I would just like to echo what was said at the end of the proclamation, which I believe is something that Judge Sepraza possesses, that not all judges have, and that is his ability to truly listen to the parties and to really try to understand where they're coming from. He always took the time that was needed to make sure everyone was heard, and I think that's one of the most important things you can do as a judge, and he did that very well. So I'd like to, on behalf of the court, congratulate him. We wish him nothing but the best, and I'm certain he has all kinds of new adventures awaiting him. So congratulations to you, Judge.
Thank you, Chief Judge. I appreciate it. I wasn't aware you were there, and I appreciate all of my colleagues at Reno Justice Court and all of the people employed there, and I thank you for your service as well.
And if the commission doesn't mind, I'd like to invite the judges on, family down for some final comments. Councilwoman, a former councilwoman, Jessica Sepraza, and his beautiful daughters are both here, both of his daughters are here, and his beautiful wife. So, I mean, we can have, I'd like to have them come down and celebrate this. But Jessica, if you would say.
My son-in-law.
Look, everybody's here. This is fantastic.
Hi, Commissioner and Chairman Lucy, and I just wanted to say a few things about my father, and thank you for honoring him today, and I thought about what I was going to say about him. But I remember as a kid, when he was running, I think, for mayor, he used to get us to go door-to-door by buying us McDonald's Happy Meals. So, he was mayor from the time I was eight to the age of 21, longest-serving mayor in the city of Reno. And I look around this community and just a tremendous amount of gratitude to all of our elected officials, and I think, what didn't my father touch? The Riverwalk downtown, the parking gallery, the National Bowling Stadium, the National Automobile Museum, and the list goes on and on, the consolidation of the courthouse, the Virginia Street Bridge, and all the things that we do as elected officials over the years that make a difference in our community. And he was my inspiration, still is, my hero in why I got involved in public service, the kindest person I know, great dad to our family, and I just wanted to wish him well on his retirement, thank him for all of his service to the community, and thank all of you guys too. I know, being on the other side, how challenging and difficult it can be, especially in these times, I don't know how you guys do it. You can't win. And just want to say thank you, I love you, Dad, and thank you for all you've done for the community and your kind heart.
All right, can we take a quick picture and for some posterity with the judge? I mean, if we want to stage behind the dais or come down, can we do that? Let's do that. Let's get everybody. Why don't you guys come in here and take a quick picture?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Scoop right over right below that seal that you worked so hard for me for so many years.
Okay, we'll do a couple of them. All right, one, two, three. All right, do another one, one, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're a daughter, you're a daughter.
Oh, my God. It's crazy. Yeah, that's, oh, you are.
Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. I know I'm going to enjoy it. It's been fun eight years, and I'm actually looking forward to it.
It is cool.
Well, if we can enjoy it, I'd like to give it a hand. That's why I'm looking back at you. I told you this time, this is a chance. Congratulations. Thanks for it.
that have served with you and want to say a few things as well. So, I will turn that over very quickly to Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your Honor, congratulations on a long and prosperous career, culminating with being a judge for many years. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done. Your fingerprints are everywhere. So, you can know that this community is, has been shaped by you, by your vision, by the things that you've been able to accomplish. And so I just, I really appreciate your service to our community. I appreciate your friendship over the years, and I'm a little envious in that you don't have to worry about what time it is. At my house, it's always a problem.
Oh, God.
Inside joke, I'm a clock collector. So, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, and congratulations again on a great career. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. It was an honor to serve with you and to do some of those things we've talked about, and appreciate everything you've done for our community as well.
Next, I have Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you so much for everything you've done. You have left a legacy for this community, and you've been a really, really positive influence for all of us. And so I just want to say thank you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you as well, Commissioner Burke Bigler, for everything you've done for this community, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Commissioner Herman.
I thank you for your service to this community. It's much appreciated, and we thank you for your family and all their help in the community and their service too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman.
And then finally, Commissioner Jung, you know, the longest-serving commissioner who's probably been closest to you as well, has some comments for you as well.
She replaced me on the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, and Mr. Honorable Judge, I just want to say to you that I am so grateful for, and I thank you on behalf of the citizens of District Three for your patriotism, your public service, and most importantly, your unwavering commitment to social justice. You are somebody that I aspire to be much like, with an open heart, and a kindness, and an understanding of where others are coming from that may not align with those things that we agree with. And for that, I am deeply, deeply thankful. You've really taught me how to chill and not make anything personal, instead to look at what is best for the greater good, and I can't thank you enough for that. I think I just, I told you that a few weeks ago on your actual retirement, it's something that's so admirable in a human being. And as Commissioner Herman said, I also want to thank your family, because I know as a public servant, we don't do this alone, and we don't, I think in a lot of ways, we don't realize how much being in the public eye really affects the people who love us very much, and how much it can really hurt them as well. So I want to thank your family, and your daughters, your sons, your wonderful, beautiful wife, Ms. Sepraza. I thank all of you, because I know this is a whole-family commitment, and it is remarkable how well this family can weather anything and always come out on the right of justice. So I appreciate you, Mr. Judge, but this is not so long, this is see you soon, because we're still having a big party when this COVID either has a treatment or a vaccination. And me and your daughter, Jessica Sepraza, are planning on that. So, we won't forget you, don't you worry. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, and I echo your comments about my family. I appreciate them very much, and wouldn't have been able to do this without them. So, thank you, and thank you for serving in my stead in Commission District Three. Thank you all for wonderful surprise. I found out this morning, so.
We tried to float it to you as quietly as we could and keep you in the park, but we do appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
You've been a great mentor for a lot of people, and this community is very thankful for that. So, thank you, sir.
Have a wonderful day, and thank you again.
Yeah, enjoy. All right, thanks for coming. Okay. All right. Now, we've got to get to some work here. All right, we're on to item eight. Mr. Manager, this is our consent agenda. The consent items are posted as 8A through 8K3. Are there any items in the consent agenda as posted that any of the commissioners have any questions on or anything like that?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Back on item number seven with the proclamation, it's an action item.
Oh.
And I may have missed the call for a public comment, and then I don't know.
We didn't even take action on it yet, and thank you for stopping me, and I'm just trying to move along, and so I missed that. I will go back before we jump into item eight. So I'll reopen item seven, the proclamation for Judge Sepraza. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Seeing no public comment.
You made a motion by doing it, didn't you, Mr. Chair?
I made the motion, and then I have a second by the Vice Chair, so I will call for the vote for the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung voting from, via Zoom. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wattsby, I do appreciate that. So we have now, we're now back to item eight, our consent agenda, 8A through 8K3. There are some discussions. Commissioner Hartung, do you have a discussion on one of those items?
Two, Mr. Chair. So, item 8B1, it's listed as Commission District Two, unless I'm mistaken, Broken Hills has always been in Commission District Four. So that's, and I have no issue with rolling this back, so that's fine. I just wanted to make that notation, that it is Commission District Four and not Commission District Two. And then, I know Mr. Smith is in the audience, I'm just really curious about item 8B2. How did we miss the engineer's estimate by the, over $150,000, almost $1,000 for the lowest bid, up to about $230,000 for the highest bid? How was our estimate so low on this, Mr. Smith? I mean, is it just the cost of, has construction outpaced our ability to bid? I mean, that's, these are huge numbers.
For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects, and yes, through the chair to the Commissioner, we are seeing more and more of this, where the cost of construction for a variety of reasons can be delays in materials. We're seeing that, and there are some reverberations from the impacts that we're dealing with right now. This is also affecting labor costs, and so we're seeing these spikes. Interestingly enough, there are a few areas where we've seen some decreases. Unfortunately, that's not enough to offset some of these larger cost items. To help combat this, we're certainly working together internally with the CIP Committee, and certainly with my staff to go back out, reassess every project, and then working to understand how we can address and update those items. This is a big issue, unfortunately. We're going to be dealing with this for a little while longer, and other agencies are as well, so we're in communication with them to try to understand what we can do better to hone in, and at least set the expectation from the beginning when these bids are initially developed. Timing is also, plays a big role into that as well. So we're looking at ways to modify our schedules to be more reactive.
Well, and you brought up another point that I, I'm glad you made it, I was going to bring it up, and how it affects our budget, our CIP budget. It's, this is, you know, in this particular case, there's a, you know, about a 75% difference in the lowest bid to, you know, over 100% difference in the highest bid. So that, I mean, that dramatically affects our CIP and the budget there. So, I'm not castigating you, I'm just, it's just one of those things where I was floored when I saw the huge difference in the engineers' estimates and what the bids genuinely came in at. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other further comments on the consent agenda? I do want to point out on 8H, we are making the recommendation to appoint Acting Chief Justin Roper to the Chief Alternative Sentencing Officer for the Department of Alternative Sentencing for, per Washoe County. As Manager Brown pointed out earlier, there was extensive discussions and interview process. Mr. Roper was decided on to be the best suit for that. Chief Roper, as I'll call him now, have had a pleasure to know and get to know over the last few years, and he's going to be a tremendous asset in that role. And I know his previous boss, Chief Joe Ingraham, taught him well and trained him very well, so I think the succession is the smartest play in this. So, I want to congratulate him on that, that hopefully his ascension to that role. So, those are my comments. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
We have nobody signed in on any of the items.
Joe, do you have any? Nope, all right. Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung. Do I have a second? I have a second from the Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right. Madam Vice Chair, do we have a block vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do. Please forgive my voice this morning. I would ask that we make a motion that we put into a block vote, item 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Great. I have a motion for items 10 through 21. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. With that, Mr. Manager, will you read this into the record, please?
Yes, item 10 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the FY21 Roof Restoration Project. Staff recommends CTR Roofing LTD in the amount of $116,000, and if awarded, approve the purchase of roofing materials from Garland DBS in the amount of $504,228.18, utilizing Racine County, Wisconsin's contract number PW1925 pursuant to the joint provision of NRS 332.195, and approve a separate $30,000 project contingency fund. Item number 11 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsible bidder for the South Truckee Meadows PRV Replacement Project. Staff recommends FAR Construction in the amount of $418,800, and if awarded, approve a separate $30,000 project contingency fund. Item number 12 is a recommendation to authorize the construction. Item number twelve is a recommendation to authorize the construction manager at risk MWH Constructors and KG Walters Construction, a joint venture, and approve the owner C Mar Construction Agreement to construct Influent Pump and Screen Replacement Project under a guaranteed maximum price agreement, GMP two, a separate guaranteed maximum price agreement for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility twenty twenty Expansion Project in the amount of two million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Item number thirteen is a recommendation to approve the purchase of a new sewer equipment company, Sewer of America Echo, nine hundred, nine yard combination truck and chassis from Nixon, Egali Equipment Company, eight hundred E Grant Line Road, Tracy, California, four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and eighty-one cents utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number one two two oh one seven dash SCA and authorize the purchasing and contract manager to execute the Sourcewell Contract Usage Agreement. Item number fourteen is a recommendation to accept an FY twenty-one Victims of Crime Act Special Grant Award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child and Family Services in the amount of two hundred thousand, four hundred dollars, fifty thousand dollar county match, I'm sorry, fifty thousand, one hundred dollar county match retroactive from July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to provide emergency assistance support for victims with a focus on victims impacted as a result. Excuse me, of the COVID nineteen public health crisis to provide enhanced technology for human services agencies, caseworkers, and to increase access to safety and services, authorize the Director of the Human Services Agency to retroactively execute the grant award and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item number fifteen is a recommendation to accept a sub grant award from the Nevada Aging and Disability Services Division in the independent living grant, I'm sorry, from the independent living grant in support of Washoe County Human Services Agency's Homemaker Program, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars county match of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars retroactive from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Approve Amendment Number One to the contract currently awarded to Freedom Home Health LLC, awarded request for proposal RFP Number three zero eight eight dash nineteen to support the Homemaker Program which extends the initial contract term to November first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount up to one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Provides for three one-year, one-year renewal periods in amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars per renewal period and increases the available service hours up to ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five hours for the initial term. Authorize the Director of the Human Services Agency to execute the sub grant award and related documents, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments, and authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to execute Amendment Number One and any subsequent renewals. Item number sixteen is a recommendation to accept FY twenty-one Title Twenty Grant, Sub Grant Award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars, no county match, retroactive July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to promote reunification and permanent permanency, health and safety, educational support, and normalcy for children in care, to provide shelter services to prevent the removal of children from their families, and to provide professional development training to Washoe County social work staff and to foster parents, and to foster parents. Authorize the Director of the Human Services Agency to retroactively execute the grant award and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item number seventeen is a recommendation to accept a sub award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Welfare and Supportive Services, childcare licensing in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred dollars with no county match, retroactive to July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one to provide childcare licensing and monitoring within Washoe County and ratify the authority of the Director of Human Services Agency to execute the sub award and related documents. Item number eighteen is a recommendation to approve a purchase order agreement with U.S. Imaging, Inc., four hundred Franklin Street, Saginaw, Michigan, forty-eight, six oh seven, and join her with the Nye County Agreement for onsite bound and mechanical book scanning for an assortment of land and vital records. Cost estimated to be five hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, carried forward from fiscal year twenty twenty utilizing the Recorder's Technology Fund. Item number nineteen is a recommendation to approve the reimbursement of costs to be incurred by the City of Reno for Pro QA Priority Dispatch Medical Services, medical software licensing, training, quality assurance, support, and accreditation associated with implementing emergency medical dispatch services recommended by the nine-one-one Emergency Response Advisory Committee on October eighth, twenty twenty in the amount not to exceed a hundred, excuse me, in fifty-one thousand dollars. Okay. Item number twenty is a recommendation to approve the reimbursement and costs incurred by the City of Reno, City of Sparks, Departments of Washoe County, and the Washoe County School District for expenses related to and support of enhanced nine-one-one emergency response system and portable event recording devices and recommend, excuse me, recommended by the nine-one-one Emergency Response Advisory Committee on October eighth, twenty twenty in the amount not to exceed nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents as specified within the adopted enhanced nine-one-one funds operating budget. Item twenty-one is a recommendation to approve the Entrado Incorporated Service Order amending and replacing all current Entrado Incorporated Service Orders and change requests for Washoe County Regional nine-one-one Emergency Response with a one-time cost of a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, a monthly reoccurring cost of not to exceed a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars or one million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars annually, and a term of one hundred and forty-four months from the order effective date to approve utilization of nine-one-one telephone surcharge funds for the service order and direct the purchasing and contracts manager to execute the service order. That would be it.
You made it. That's a lot of reading. All right. So we have a motion and a second for items ten through twenty-one in a block vote. I do have public comment signed in, so I will go to public comment. I believe I have Aaron Abbott via Zoom. Mr. Abbott, you have three minutes. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we have you. All right, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. For the record, Aaron Abbott, Executive Director for REMZA. Thank you for hearing my public comment on item nineteen. Item nineteen is a recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners to approve funding through the Emergency nine-one-one Advisory Committee funds. This is a surcharge that is charged to wireless callers or wireless users throughout the county and those funds are used to enhance the telephonic nine-one-one system in Washoe County. The request through the E nine-one-one Advisory Committee came from the City of Reno and the City of Reno is seeking to purchase emergency medical dispatch Pro QA software in the amount shown in the staff report. This service of emergency medical dispatch is already provided by REMZA at no cost to the taxpayers and does not use surcharge funding for that service. That service is provided throughout Washoe County at a high degree of quality. We are accredited through the International Academy as of emergency dispatch since two thousand and one in the utilization of those medical call-taking protocols. This purchase by the City of Reno would be a redundant purchase and a implementation of call-taking that would create not only redundancies but also inefficiencies in the nine-one-one system. REMZA has deep concern and has expressed those deep concerns about the City of Reno's request for funding for Pro QA software through the E nine-one-one Committee and has made several comments during that process in opposition to this item. So I would like the Board of County Commission to consider this very carefully before approving this item. Thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. We appreciate you participating today. We have a motion and agenda. We don't have any further public comment on either Zoom or signed in this morning for the block vote. I just have a quick comment based upon Mr. Abbott's discussion. It is my understanding, obviously, as the Board of County Commissioners, we have a fiscal responsibility via NRS to approve the funding from the E nine-one-one Board on to those who participate it. However, if we approve the funding doesn't mean the actual funds will get spent. I do believe that if EMD services were going to be provided by the City of Reno, that would have to be a movement by their city council in coordination with their public safety individuals, i.e. their firefighters and their fire chief and their police chief. So I do have some, I hear your concerns, Mr. Abbott, and REMZA's concerns in regards to the redundancy, but as this is a pass-through from our E nine-one-one Board on to them, I feel it's prudent that we can move forward with this, but I do have concerns if they don't implement that and it would be a redundant service that we're spending extra money on. So thank you for your comments. All right, we have a motion and a second, no further public comment, no discussion. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. All right. We are on to item nine. Mr. Manager.
All right. See if I can get through this one, Mr. Chair. Item nine is a discussion and possible action to terminate the agreement for dispatch and forensic services between the City of Reno Police Department and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office dated September twenty-sixth, twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety. Such termination to be effective ninety days after the City of Reno has provided notice of termination as required by Article seven of the agreement. Authorize and direct the county manager to provide written notice of the board's action to terminate the agreement at least ninety days prior to the effective date of termination and to take all other actions consistent with termination of the agreement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. I do appreciate it. This has been a discussion for a long time. I know the vice chair and Commissioner Hartung have been leading the chair this for a long time, a very long time, and I think we finally come to that discussion piece where it's time to make things right and adjust things the way they should be, no longer on handshakes. We, we're a very large county. We're not the largest county, but we are a large county and we need to start operating it as such. No longer can handshake agreements be an understanding. It should be exactly as every other business in this community is pay for play. So those are my comments. I do have other commissioners, obviously, signed in that would like to discuss this. So Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you guys are all aware, this has been a really hot issue for me for some period of time and, you know, regional dispatch has the potential to serve our constituents in Washoe County cheaper, safer, better all around. And there's no way to reach regional dispatch as long as we have these side agreements between two of the three or four or five entities, however many, maybe six even you could put in, however many entities are in there. Additionally, Washoe County, which is the regional government, is picking up costs for a certain portion of the region and not costs necessarily associated with the whole unincorporated county. And that, what that basically means is that residents who pay taxes in the unincorporated portion of the county are paying for services that are not rendered to residents who live in the unincorporated portion of the county. And I think that is probably my big, has been my biggest concern all along. I know that both the current sheriff and the previous sheriff have tried extensively to get, reach an agreement with the City of Reno. That agreement has not been, they have not achieved that goal. And I really truly believe, I know that our county manager has worked on also trying to get an agreement, and I just believe the only way we're ever going to resolve this problem is to dissolve this agreement and move forward. And I, I'm glad this is on the agenda in this, one of the last meetings that I will be on this commission because I want to vote in favor of dissolving the agreement and then hope that this commission will run with it and really fix this problem in the future for the constituents who live throughout the greater Washoe County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate that. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I agree with Vice Chair Burke Bigler, except for one thing, third sheriff. Remember, the first presentation that we got was from Mike Haley.
Yes.
When we were very first elected, and I want to tell you, it was back in two thousand and thirteen when Sheriff Haley stood here in this chamber and talked about the disparities and those huge differences. It's been a long time coming. It's overdue. It just, it needs to be righted. It's, this is, it's just a simple scenario of writing this and doing business where we don't just exchange services, but we actually exchange checks, so to speak. That's really the most equitable way to deal with this and I think that we are doing a great in-service by leaving this the way that it is. So it's time to change and it's not going to be a simple change, it's not going to be a comfortable change, but it's just, it's time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I couldn't agree more with the vice chair and Commissioner Hartung in the sense that the difficulties of accounting for and putting together proposals and cost allocations for these types of services is difficult when you have an agreement based upon you do this, I do that. For all of us that have owned businesses and know that that's, it's a difficult way to operate a business, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, whether they live in the cities or not, to fulfill their needs and make sure that those services and those dollars are being spent wisely from their tax, from their tax dollars. So I think this is the right thing to do. This is not a, this is not a personal thing. This is just purely business in the smartest and most eloquent way. This is how we right the wrongs and make sure we get things going in the right direction. So I look forward to moving forward on this as well. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in as well.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank everybody that had anything to do with getting this on the agenda today. It's something that, I mean, it- It's something that, I mean, it's simply balancing the budget. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right, seeing no more comments from the Commission, I'll call for public comment. And Madam Clerk.
Mr. Tom Daley.
All right. Mr. Daley, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Tom Daley for the record states at Mount Rose. I won't repeat the comments made earlier, they're all accurate, but from a taxpayer perspective, according to the county auditor, this subsidy to Reno has now reached $8 million from 2007 to the end of this year, and we still have another 90 days to go. So it's going to be over $8 million. It's time to end the subsidy, let Reno stand on its own feet. There is one item in the agenda which I assume, agenda item which I assume will form a basis of your motion. It speaks to the termination date 90 days after the effective date. This effective date bothers me because it's not specified. If you make a motion today, does the 90 days start tomorrow and therefore end on February 11th? And then is it terminated? As a citizen, I'm very confused about what is the 90-day term? When does it start? When does it end? When is the agreement terminated? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Do we have any further public comment?
We have nobody else signed in.
All right, seeing nobody from Zoom or here in the chambers, I'll bring it back to the board. To address Mr. Daley's comment, Mr. Manager, the 90 days would be effective after, as of today, as soon as the Commission would take a vote?
That is my understanding. Unless the DA's office has another reading.
Okay.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Watzvial.
So the way the staff item was written was so that 90 days after the letter is delivered to the city of Reno after they're provided notice, that will be the termination date.
Okay, so 90, effectively 90 calendar days, correct? Not business days or anything like that? It's just 90 calendar days from today?
Correct. Well, it's, again, it's a matter of when they officially get notice of it. So as soon as they receive notice, then the 90 days starts.
And that notice would-
If that can be today, then that would be perfect.
But we would submit that, we would submit that to the city of Reno as soon, as soon as possible, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. For Mr. Watzvial, Mr. Watzvial, so can we assume that today is the 10th? So can we assume by Friday, which would be the 13th, that that letter would be delivered?
Well, I'm not going to be the person who delivers it, but I would think you could get that done certainly before the week is out.
Okay. All right. I just, I don't know whether you need that specificity in our motion of the, you know, when actually the clock starts.
Right. So the second clause of the motion says authorize and direct the county manager to provide written notice of the board's action-
Correct.
-to terminate the agreement at least 90 days prior to the effective date of termination.
Correct.
So that is what will trigger the clock. So once the county manager has provided that notice, then the 90 days shall start.
So Commissioners, to Mr. Daley's point, should we specify a date that we want this letter delivered by?
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate because times get delivered, times delay get delayed, and things get delayed. Government, the progress of government sometimes runs into roadblocks. I think it would be appropriate in our motion to ask that the county manager deliver it by Friday.
Okay.
The 13th.
And let's all recognize tomorrow is a holiday.
Correct.
Yeah, but I mean-
No, no, I understand.
Not like it's going too far across town.
No, but, you know, I just, it just has to be recognized tomorrow is a holiday, so I think by the 13th is a reasonable amount of time for it to be delivered.
All right.
And so one other question, does that letter have to be signed for Mr. Watzvial? How does that, how does that work? Is it, does it have to be done by certified mail, or how will this be accomplished so that, so that we're indemnified?
So, looking at the agreement, there's nothing in there that specifically says how the notice is to be provided. It just says that it shall be provided in writing.
Okay.
So I'm assuming any letters presented that are presented to them, either the clerk will give receipt of those letters, the Reno City Clerk, or the manager, Reno City Manager himself-
Okay.
-through the managers. So that's, you could ask for a receipt of, you could ask for a receipt in the motion if that was something-
Yeah, and I think that it's just, I think it's a very, it's a salient point made by the commenter.
Yeah. Okay.
And Mr. Chair, let me clarify one thing.
Yes.
I was looking at the effective date, termination date clause. It doesn't say that it has to be given in writing. It's going to be recommended to be done in writing, and that's what the board has been advised to do.
Okay.
So the term in Article 7 actually says termination of this agreement shall require 90 days' notice to the affected party. So as soon as it's delivered, the notice period should start, and we can count the 90 days at that point.
Okay. All right. So seeing no further public comment and seeing no further discussion by the Commissioners, at this time, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
I will make a motion, and I will actually read it from here, move to terminate the agreement for dispatch and forensic services between the city of Reno Police Department and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office dated September 25th, 1990. Such termination is to be effective 90 days after the city of Reno has provided notice of the termination as required by Article 7 of the agreement. And we are asking that that notice be provided on Friday, the 13th.
No later than.
No later than Friday, the 13th. Friday, the 13th. Authorize and direct the county manager to provide the written notice of the board's action and to terminate, to terminate the agreement at least 90 days prior to the effective date of termination and to take all other actions consistent with termination of the agreement.
All right. I have a motion from Vice Chair Burke Bigler, a second from Commissioner Herman. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. Please affirm your vote on the screen. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We're now, for help with that, we are on now to item 22. Mr. Manager.
Item 22 is a recommendation to receive update and provide for discussion and possible direction to staff on the current status milestones, change orders, and budget of the Nevada Shared Radio System project in Washoe County. And I believe we have Quinn Corbulek.
Mr. Corbulek, are you with us, sir?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
So I'm going to share my screen. I have a presentation.
And Quinn, I hate to be, you know, but brevity would be helpful today.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Sir.
Quinn Corbulek, Washoe County Technology Services for the record. Carol Lucy, thanks for inviting me to provide an update on the shared radio system today. So the board has been with us every step of the way in terms of partnering with NDOT and NV Energy in building out a statewide public safety radio system. And this presentation kind of summarizes most of the actions that we've taken, but also provides an update on the schedule, our budget, and some of the actions that we've taken internally to move the project forward. So real quickly, the shared radio system is an interoperable public safety radio communication system that serves 40 organizations around the state. We have over 125 radio sites, and our current system, the current NSRS, is at its end of life. It's over 20 years old, and so back in 2016, the county, along with NDOT and NV Energy, decided to, that we needed to replace the current system. So Washoe County currently has 12 sites, and we're expanding with this new system to 17 sites. As I've noted, we are working with NDOT, NV Energy, and NV Energy, and we've taken a number of actions, including signing a purchase agreement and a governance agreement to move the statewide radio system forward. Washoe County specifically has signed the Nevada Shared Radio System Agreement, and this is an agreement that is basically the statewide governance framework for the radio system. And another thing that that agreement did was make it so that each of the signers, the NDOT, NV Energy, and Washoe County, agreed to select a single vendor to build out the statewide system. So after going through an RFP process with, administered by the state, Harris Radios, our Harris Corporation was selected, and in September 27th of 2018, we, Washoe County, signed a system purchase agreement to build out Washoe County's portion of the system. Now, just in June, the board ratified, signed and ratified the P-25 radio system interlocal with 15 local and regional agencies. And this interlocal establishes a management structure, administrative structure, to participate for, for each agency to participate in the system governance, but also provides, and this is an important part of this, of this agreement, provides a way to allocate the costs of the system proportionate to each agency's use of the system. And then just in September, we sold our Nevada Shared Radio System bond, resulting in a $10.5 million bond proceeds, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in subsequent So real quickly, our project schedule, if you look at the right, on the right, there's a map. The project is split into three different regions. Region 1, obviously, in the southern, we're here in Region 2, and then Region 3. And what's not shown on the map is Region 0, which was basically a pilot project to get the project off the ground. But it also was instrumental in installation of the core or the, of the system, and those are the network switching centers. So if you see on the map, there are three boxes in the south and three boxes in the northwest portion of the state. Those represent the core of the radio system. And each, each one of those cores, the primary core in the north, primary core in the south, and there's two redundant secondary cores in the north and south also, can run the entire statewide system. So there is a lot of redundancy built in. And Washoe County is the owner of the primary core in the north, and that installation happened, completed in January of this year. Right now, as far as the schedule is concerned, we are in our Region 2 design phase, and this is a detailed design where we're looking at each of the greenfield sites, but also, and designing towers and antennas and the buildings that will house all of the radio system equipment. But also, you know, things like wiring diagrams and the microwave system. So that's, it's a pretty involved phase in determining the design of the system for Region 2. We've been involved in some site development activities, mostly site surveys, but the major site construction is all going to happen next summer after we get through our design process. And then the system installation should be complete October 22nd, or October of 2021, and the final system acceptance will happen in April of 2023. Looking a little bit deeper at the project budget, we basically have two different budget buckets for project payments. One is for milestone payments, and the other is the site civil allowance. So milestone payments happen essentially when the contractor, L3 Harris, performs certain actions or gets to certain levels in the, that are specified in the contract. And those can be, you know, a system installation or a, and the one that's more, most relevant right now is our detailed design review. When we finish our design review and approve the design, that will be a milestone, and we'll make a milestone payment. The site civil allowance payments are more related to our green or ground field site construction or site remediation, and any of the monies that will come from that bucket require a change order to access those funds. So we have a lot of change orders that we'll talk about in a couple of slides, but those are basically to access those funds, or it's kind of a notice to proceed and to utilize the funds that we have budgeted. So milestone payments, the ones that we've completed are in green, I'm not going to read through each one of these. The ones that we have upcoming are not in green. Our change orders, the ones highlighted here in green are ones that were effectively notices to proceed to utilize that site civil allowance, those site civil allowance dollars. The most significant here are number seven and eight, and most recent also are the greenfield site civil construction, so that was $3.8 million. Again, that's a notice to proceed, but that's not an increase of our budget. That's just allowing Harris to begin accessing those funds. And number eight was the notice to proceed on the, replacing the microwave system. From a finance perspective, so this is, you know, effectively how we're going to pay for all of this. Just in September, as I mentioned earlier, we sold the Nevada Shared Radio System bond. Bond proceeds were about $10.5 million. As you're probably aware, Commissioners, we received a very good interest rate on that, 1.38%, and will owe after debt and combining debt and interest and some other fees, $11.6 million, and that's on a 15-year repayment schedule. The other part of this is that in the interlocal agreement, there are two different ways the agencies can help pay for the system. One of those is a agency prepayment, and there were five different agencies that elected to do their, to prepay, and that prepayment amount was $3.1 million, or about $3.2 million, actually. And the other part of that is debt service payment. So just like Washoe County is going to pay, help, to help pay off that debt and interest over 15 years, other agencies, other partner agencies have also elected to pay over that So looking at this a tiny bit deeper, just from what we've paid so far and where the funding sources are, early on in our, in our project, we obviously didn't have our financing set up, so Washoe County footed the initial bill in fiscal year 19 and partially in fiscal year 20. The second column from the left, sorry, the third column from the left, the WC RCS Infrastructure Fund, that's a fund that's set up by all of the participating agencies in our current radio system. So that was a pooled resource that we were able to utilize to make payments in fiscal year 20. Now, in fiscal year 21, the remaining payments will come from those partner agency prepayments and the bond proceeds. So we've made, we've made some payments from those payment sources, but we have a pretty large amount of remaining funds as we move forward with the project. And any remaining payments will come from those partner agency prepayments and the bond So overall, the project is on track. We have completed a number of small steps, and I would say that as, as we started this project in 2018, the majority of the work has happened in the southern portion of the state. And as we move into calendar year 21, we're going to be ramping up our- And as we move into calendar year 21, we're going to be ramping up our activity. The reason why I have this marked as orange, we're still on track, but there is some schedule delay in region one of the state. So we are anticipating that it may delay our schedule a bit. Having said that, we are doing everything that we can to, as as a county, work on the things that we can work on to maintain our schedule and stay on pace to begin construction and site installation in coming in in the spring of 2021. And budget, as I noted, is on track. And I'm happy to take any questions you guys may have.
Great.
Moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbulek. I appreciate the update on the P 25 system. Are there any questions for for Quinn in regards to this? Commissioner, our time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Corbulek, the the sites that we're using for the repeaters, are they going to be co-located and say the peaks that already have microwave installations and, you know, transmitters already so that we will not have to or be delayed with with site acquisition?
Yes, they are. So there are, I mean, the new radio system equipment will be placed at our existing sites.
Okay.
However, because we've seen so much growth in the region over the last 20 years, I mean, I noted that our current system is 20 years old. We are having to install new sites to cover those areas, to provide better public safety radio system coverage in those areas. So we we will have, you know, site acquisition issues. The majority, there's so the of the five sites, of the five greenfield sites, one is on Washoe County land, another is in within the jurisdiction of the city of Sparks. The other, there are two on B L M and a third on Fish and Wildlife. So or the fifth is on Fish and Wildlife. So we will definitely, as we're moving in, when we complete our design review, we'll have all of our design documents and be able to submit for our permits on those B L M lands. I know that the the permit process can take anywhere from six months to eight months. So we're going to, as soon as we finish our design process, we're going to submit those and hopefully get that completed by sometime in the midsummer when we plan to begin construction on those greenfield sites.
Okay, those, the the three sites that you mentioned, the B L M, the two B L Ms and the one Fish and Wildlife, do we have to go through an E A or an E I S process?
I don't believe so. The the one, there's only one site that isn't on a in a disturbed area. The two farthest northern sites at 49 Mountain and Yellow Peak, there are already, there's already communications infrastructure on those on those at those locations. Our site in Red Rocks, we will have to go through the B L M process, and that may, yes, that may include an environmental.
Okay, all right. I I hope that doesn't trip us up in in terms of of getting complete coverage. And so that's it's just a just a concern, but I appreciate the information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Corbulek.
All right.
Corbulek.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right. This is an action item. If we want to acknowledge receipt of the report, is there any public comment signed in, Ms. Madam Clerk?
There's nobody signed in.
All right, same none. There's really no need for us to to do anything based upon just this purely an update where we were on funding and the actual construction of the system. So I will just not call for any motion today and move forward with that. So we'll close item 22, and that will take us to item 23. This is our public hearing for the for the day. So I'll open the public hearing. And we we're going to hear the appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission. So with that, Mr. Manager, can you read this into the record?
Yes, it's a, item 23 is a public hearing. It's a it's an appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial on ORNE 36 LLC special use permit case number WSUP 20-0013, Ormat Geothermal. For one, the establishment of energy production renewable use type, including two 24-megawatt geothermal power plants. Two, the establishment of a hazardous materials use in the form of 720,000 pounds of flammable pentane gas, a refrigerant, for use as a turbine working fluid. And three, major grading of 194.9 acres of ground disturbance, including 300,000 cubic yards of excavation for well pads and excess roads. And four, 120 kilovolt power transmission line that extends plus or minus 21.6 miles over 20 parcels. The application also requests two varying landscape parking and grading standards by waiving all landscaping requirements, waiving the paved parking requirement and allowing grading height differentials of greater than 10 feet from natural grade. This project meets the standard for a project of regional significance because it will generate more than five megawatts of electricity, require construction of two substations, and require the construction of a new transmission line, and will require approval of the regional planning authorities before any approval at the county level would take effect. The two substations will be located on APN 071-070-13 and 071-030-06. The well pads will be located on APN 071-030-07, 071-070-19, The transmission line will be located on APN 079-080-02, 079-570-13, 079-320-52, and 079-570-12. The Board of County Commissioners may review the the record and take one of the following four actions. One, affirm the decision of the Planning Commission and deny special use permit case number WSUP 20-0013. Or, two, reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and approve special use permit case number WSUP 20-0013 as proposed by the applicant, ORNE 36 LLC, and as evaluated by staff in the Planning Commission staff report. Or, three, reverse the direction of the Planning Commission and approve special use permit case number W S P S U P 20-0013 for modifications. Or four, remand special use permit case number WSUP 20-0013 back to the Planning Commission with instructions. If reversed and approved, or if reversed and approved with modifications, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect, including a recommendation to the regional planning authorities for an amendment to the regional utility corridor map to reflect this project for, one, a 48-megawatt geothermal energy center containing two 24-megawatt geothermal facilities and related substations on APN 071-070-13, approximately 10 miles north of Pyramid Lake. And two, a 21.6-mile, 120-kilovolt overhead transmission line connection with an existing utility corridor approximately 10 miles east of the southern tip of Pyramid Lake, south to the border of Washoe County.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, can you go back and read this? I think I think I got lost right after transmission pads. I I didn't know. Poor guy, I'm like, he's, this has not been his agenda this today, let me just tell you. All right, Mr. Manager, you know, you got caught by hard-tongued humor. I think it's pretty funny. All right, so with that being said, we do have our staff with us. Dan Kalani is available for any questions that any of the commissioners may have in regards to this. This is a an appeal by Ormat to our board. And as we have done in appeals of these natures, we also give the appellant time to make their case. We are joined by Andy Derling, who is representing the applicant. So I will leave it to the commission if we want to have a presentation or we just want to go right to the appellant. Anybody looking any different? All right, Mr. Derling.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the record, Andy Derling with Wood Rogers, representing Ormat on the North Valley's geothermal project. I do have a presentation, if you'll allow me to share my screen.
Making you a panelist, and you will be able to do that shortly.
There we go. Can you guys see that okay?
Yep, we got you good.
Okay. So again, Andy Derling, Wood Rogers, representing Ormat on this North Valley's geothermal facility appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. Here we go, a little overview on Ormat. They are a publicly traded company developing geothermal projects across the world and headquartered right here in in northern Nevada. They've been in business for over 55 years, have a market cap of almost $3.8 billion and currently operating 914 megawatts of our projects across across the world, really, with close to 1,500 employees. They do have a large footprint here in northern Nevada. Most of you are probably familiar with their projects on the south side of town, near Galena High School, the Steamboat and Galena power projects that are down there. They also have quite an extensive pipeline of of future projects that are coming forward and have engaged, applied an analysis to develop an economic impact report for those projects. And so that, just a very brief overview, if you look in the in the bottom right here, the North Valleys project is actually on the forefront of that pipeline of projects that they have coming forward and shown here in in the map across northern Nevada. Just to give you an idea of the economic impact that you would be interested in, the fiscal impact here, when you look at all the sales and use tax, property taxes, geothermal projects actually pay mineral taxes as well. And when you add all those up, they have a fiscal impact in across northern Nevada of nearly $123 million over the lifespan of. Before you today is a new project for them up near in the northern portion of the county, kind of outside of the Gerlach area there. The project sites located about six miles southwest of State Route 447 and Rodeo Creek Road in the high desert Truckee Canyon planning areas. Primary access will utilize that existing access route off of State Route 447, its own general rural, and is adjacent to an existing geothermal facility, the San Emilio geothermal facility, which was acquired by Ormat a few years ago. This is a special use permit for renewable energy production. In the process of the renewable energy production, it does use a hazardous material, pentane gas. We'll get into a little bit of the details of that. And also, the S U P includes major grading associated with the wells and the roads that are necessary to access them. It is a project of regional significant, it generates more than five megawatts of power. There are two substations that would be built with these two power plants, and it would also include the construction of a new transmission line. And as as outlined by the county manager, would also include sponsorship of a regional plan amendment to include that new transmission facility as well as the the substations. Just a summary of the proposed new facilities. There is a temporary disturbance that goes on about 190 acres. Ultimately, parts of those are reclaimed. Really, the the well pads themselves need to be a little bit bigger when they're drilling them. And then in operation, they're able to be reclaimed and become a smaller pad. So a permanent disturbance of the site is just about acres. This project includes on the northern portion, two 24-megawatt binary geothermal energy facilities. Each of those includes a half-acre substation, geothermal fluid production, injection wells in the well pads, access roads, geothermal pipelines to carry the production fluid to the plants and then back to the injection wells. And then ancillary support services in the overhead transmission line. The southern portion really is just limited to the overhead transmission line, which is located in the existing 368 energy corridor. The two power plants utilize air-cooled technology. So there are condensers on top of the facility that air cool the motive fluid, which is that pentane gas. Basically, it's a it's a binary system where the hot geothermal fluid passes by the motive fluid, the pentane gas, in in those heat exchangers. The pentane gas is vaporized, which turns the turbine and ultimately generates the energy and the and the power that goes into the grid. In this case, the geothermal fluid and the the pentane gas never actually come in contact with each other. They're just passing by each other in a series of pipes. And then the the basically, it's a double-closed system. The geothermal fluid goes up, heats the gas, goes back down into the ground to get reheated. And then the the pentane gas is air-cooled, goes back to a liquid and goes back through the process. So it's a very clean system. The pentane gas is flammable, but it's not toxic and does require advanced permitting through the state and the county. There'll be about 720,000 pounds of pentane in the system at any given time. And then there are some storage tanks on site that if during maintenance, that pentane needs to be backed out of the system forward, and then the the system itself can be maintained before reentering the system with that. Each plant includes several buildings. All of them are under 35 feet in height. The half-acre substation, it'll have an eight-foot chain-link fence with no slats, per per the comments that we received from the cab out there, and topped with barbed wire for for security. Lighting will be minimal and be motion-controlled. Ancillary facilities include office, restroom, electrical rooms, typical of a power plant. And then the two, it'll also have two 500-gallon above-ground storage tanks for diesel fuel and some other fuels to to maintain the system and and equipment that's on site. All the structures, as I said, will be 35 feet or less in height. There'll be three parking spaces. Those will not be paved because really it's not open to the public, which we included a parking waiver for. There's no formal landscaping or street screening as there's really not a lot of water out there to maintain it. And then the well drilling, just so you know, is anticipated to start as soon as possible this year with construction of the of the power plant facilities beginning next year. An operation slated to come online in 2022. Up to 25 production or injection well pads are included. Those are included through the E A process with the B L M, where 25 sites were were identified. It's not likely that all 25 sites will be utilized, but a little bit of a broader brush with the number of pads up front. And then as they start drilling pads, they'll be able to hone in on those exact locations. Based on the E A, we're looking about seven, a little over seven and a half miles of production and injection well pipelines. Those are typically above ground. The pipelines are generally 30 inches in diameter, and as I mentioned, above ground. Reading associated with this project, again, really just in the roads and the well pads and then and then the pad for the power plants themselves, generate about 300,000 cubic yards of dirt movement. Will require some cutting of slopes for those new roads. Native material will be used as much as possible. And there were three pad sites where we will exceed 10 feet of cut, and a waiver was requested as part of the special use permit. Getting to addressing the Planning Commission's concerns on this, really, there was very little question and answer by the Planning Commission, and we were led to kind of assume their motives in the denial of this. Ultimately, we believe it came down to them looking at a couple of public comments, one in particular from the Indian, Pyramid Indian tribe, really regarded regarding the BLM EA process, which there was concern over groundwater monitoring. We are happy to pass along that, you know, during, the EA process is moving along, we are expecting completion later this month. And in that EA, there is a very robust groundwater monitoring program that will be monitored and managed by the BLM. So that is a, that's a separate process outside of the county process for this use permit. Really, this use permit is just looking at the physical above-ground improvements that are necessary for the power plant. There was also some public comment from an adjacent property owner. We are happy to pass along that actually we have reached an agreement, or ORMAT has reached an agreement with that adjacent property owner for mineral leases and access easements, and their objection has been withdrawn. That being the case, we feel very strongly that all the findings can be met. In particular, the Planning Commission mentioned two findings, findings four and six. With finding four, this is a finding that, basically, the issuance of the SUP would not be detrimental to adjacent properties or the public at large. With the addition of the underground water and geothermal resource, which is regulated by NDEP and BLM and not Washoe County as part of the EA process, special use permit findings require that the physical development conforms with Washoe County code, which it does, and was confirmed by staff in their very thorough staff report that was included to the Planning Commission. And then again, that adjoining property owner has withdrawn their objection, so finding four, we feel can be made in the affirmative. Finding six is the development of natural resources. ORMAT's geothermal power production process does not use any natural resources. It does use the geothermal brine, but as I mentioned in the presentation, it uses that in a closed system, basically bringing it up, using it to heat a motive fluid, the pentane gas, and then reinjecting it back into the ground. So there's really, it's just a temporary use of that heat from that geothermal resource, and then it's put back down into the ground to reheat again. The environmental permitting and natural resource management is a responsibility of other state and federal agencies, of which ORMAT has a long list of permits that they would be required to get, both as part of the BLM process and just operating, under normal circumstances, a geothermal project in the state of Nevada. Mitigation for the physical development of the site, which really gets to the heart of this finding, which is items such as revegetation or dust control and erosion control are addressed with the project and the conditions that staff outlined. Again, the effects on any adjacent properties have been mitigated as that property owner is now really a part of the project, and their objections have been withdrawn. Just to conclude, the benefits of this project, it is in an area that is a known geothermal production area. There's even an existing power plant right next door. This will provide clean energy to about 29,000 homes and offset about $5.3 million, or a million tons, sorry, of CO2. They will provide a rigorous groundwater monitoring plan and, with the BLM process, to identify any geothermal impacts to the shallow groundwater throughout the valley, as well as the normal, ordinary NDEP monitoring program that would be required for a project like this. We do include a compromise, it will include a comprehensive monitoring and mitigation program for kinga rumaus, which is a state-sensitive species in the area as well. And then permit issuance of this will help Nevada meet the goal of 50% renewable energy by 2030. With that, our team, including myself, Garrett Gordon with Lewis and Roca, and Bennett Orcutt with ORMAT are on the line to answer any of your questions, and we do request that you reverse the Planning Commission's decision and approve this very needed project. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Durling, for your presentation. We do appreciate that for some clarification. Being that this is a public hearing, we do, I will open public comment before we go into any further discussion.
I do have a 25-page email from Christopher Dixon that outlines the public comment that was provided to the Planning Commission, and that will be placed on file for the record.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no further public comment from either Zoom or from, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion. Commissioner Herman, do you have any discussion? Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have thoroughly gone through this and the whole program here, and I find that it would be a tremendous benefit rather than any detriment, and I'm for it. I don't have any questions. It's all very clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. And it's my understanding, Mr. Durling, too, as well, that so many of these issues are going to be overseen by NDEP, the EPA, BLM, Department of Minerals, and a number of oversight agencies, and also that this project will go to the TMRPA because of its sizable regional significance. Is that correct, that there are a number of agencies that'll still have opportunity to review this, and that purely the county commission's role in this is like, as you pointed out, the above-ground structures and the disturbances to the dirt itself in those specific APNs? Is that correct?
You are absolutely correct. There is a laundry list of agencies that regulate projects such as these. ORMAT in particular, you know, at the beginning of my presentation, mentioned, they've been doing business in northern Nevada for decades and have a stellar track record of operating these types of facilities. This is obviously, you know, far away from any of the urban areas and in an unpopulated area. If you look to the south, like I said, in the Galena area, you know, they've been operating about half a dozen power plants or more down there for decades with stellar safety record. So as Commissioner Herman mentioned, we feel like this is a fantastic addition to the northern Nevada energy system, and you're correct, there's a number of different agencies that will be not only permitting this, but overseeing it as it's in production during its life cycle.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Durling, do they have water rights for this facility currently?
They do have water rights. There are some, we'll call them shower water wells, which would provide water for basically the toilets on site.
No, 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 I'm talking about for the geothermal resource, and do they need water rights? Because these are essentially non-consumptive.
Correct, and this is getting a little technical on the geothermal, and I may have to defer to the ORMAT folks, but my understanding is it's not necessarily a water right, it's a mineral right that is treated that way.
Right, okay, got it. Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't think they're draining the water table in any way, shape, or form. Everything that they pull out goes back in.
That's correct. It's drawn out, used to heat the pentane, to vaporize the pentane, and then goes right back down into the ground.
Right, exactly. No, I agree with Commissioner Herman. I don't find this to be a detriment. I think it's a great asset. I did, I pulled this up on the map. It's 20 miles from Gerlach. It's, I don't want to say it's out in the middle of nowhere, but it's pretty darn close. I do not understand why the Planning Commission could not see its way through to approve this. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. Well, being that it's in Commissioner Herman's district, would you like to move forward with that, or should I go turn to Commissioner Harton? Okay. Commissioner Harton.
I move to reverse the decision of the Planning Commission and approve the special use permit case number WSP 20-0013 as proposed by the applicant, Orney 36 LLC, and as evaluated by the staff and the Planning Commission in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? So I have a second from Commissioner Herman. Motion from Commissioner Harton, second from Commissioner Herman.
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Harton.
I look forward to more of these projects coming forward. You know, we have to have 50% renewables by 2030. That's 10 years away, less than 10 years away. We're almost at 21, it's nine years away. And these kinds of projects are wonderful, they're non-consumptive, they're truly amazing. I look forward to seeing more of these applications in the future, and I would remind everyone that this resource is where you find it. It's a little like hunting chuckle, they are where you find them. You can't just set up a geothermal resource anyplace. And so I think this is an amazing project, and I commend ORMAT, and I commend Mr. Durling and his colleagues for the great work that they did in planning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, further under discussion, Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, under discussion. This state has lots of geothermal, and not to use it to address the needs that we need here in this state would be criminal, in my opinion. This is an excellent project that will provide jobs and that will also help us to meet our goals for 2030, so good job.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commission voting. All right. Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate that. So we are now, Mr. Manager, on to item 24.
Item 24 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any further public?
There's nobody signed in.
All right, nobody on Zoom? All right, seeing nothing, we will close public comment. We are on to our item 25. This is our final county manager commissioners announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything, sir?
No further announcements, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, I do have Commissioner Herman signed in. Commissioner Herman.
Since Veterans Day is right on us, I wish every veteran an enjoyable and peaceful day, and I hope they all get to go see the Veterans Day Parade in Virginia City.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. I appreciate that. My brain is not working great today. Okay, seeing nothing further, I will adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, have a great day.